It's not Cindy. I had a good day before. Good morning and welcome to the July 14th County Commission. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here this morning. I remind everybody to silence our cell phones and there's meeting documents next Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert in the first row here can help you. With that, we'll go to routine business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any changes? If not, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 7th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item three is bills to be paid of $633,201.45.
Pay the bills.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second to pay the bills. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, today's bills include $210,000 for armor correctional health, $50,000 for highway asphalt, and $75,000 for metro communications.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor approving the bills as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have two reports, which are on file, the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of June 30th, 2015. And the second report is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for June 2015. Item five, Carrie Dever. Morning Carrie.
Good morning. What I have for you today are the routine personnel actions, which includes several, as well as a recommendation for your new appointment in the commission office.
And any comments? Any questions? Any motions? Move to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve routine action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I think we're complete.
All right. Thank you.
If we take just a second and introduce Carol Muller, who is our new administrator for the county government. If you have any comments, we'd love to be hearing from you because you'll probably get tired of us later.
Good morning Commissioners, Carol Muller. And yes, I am very excited to be working with all of you. Minnehaha County is where I grew up at and have chosen to make this my home and I have enjoyed my time with the county. I appreciate the people that I work for and work with and my peers, the department heads, and look forward to continuing those relationships and learning even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll go to item six, which is application for abatement. Abatement, Pam Nelson? No, Kyle, you're not Pam Nelson.
She's not here, I know.
We'll go to Kyle Helsa.
I'll do Pam's for her. I know she'd let me do it. First one is an assessment freeze for record ID number 30648, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $888.35. The second one is from St. John American Lutheran Church, Sioux Falls. This is exempt status granted, record ID 43846 for 2014 property taxes in the amount of $85.31.
Do we need to do those separately?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. You have a motion to do one at a time or if you'd like to do them together, that's fine also.
I'll make a motion to approve both at the same time.
We have a motion and a second to approve both items A and B for the abatements. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Item seven is just a notice and a request for the East Dakota Water Development Meeting on Thursday, July 16th at 9:00 in Brookings. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. Scott Anderson, if you'd like to go forward and tell us about that.
Scott Anderson, Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. Last week, I gave you a briefing on today's action, which is going to be a first reading and a request to authorize the auditor to publish hearing notice for amendments to MC 3810, which is our drainage ordinance. And I'll just put a map on, I'll give you a brief overview for those that weren't here last week or the television. As you recall, earlier this year, the USGS adopted or added a named creek to their maps, which is Annie Anderson Creek. And that has subsequently required us to amend our drainage ordinance to include this name, named creek, in our list of named creeks. And you may be aware that that is important because it allows, once you have a named creek, it changes how we deal with drainage in the county and it allows drainage to go directly into the named creek in a different manner than tiling work that goes into an intermittent stream or just into a drainage ditch. While we were looking at this amendment, it became, there were a couple of cleanup items that we needed to deal with. For example, in section 106, there's a misspelled word for maintenance, we're cleaning that up. And then finally, the state's attorney's office recommended that we also amend how we notify downstream property owners. For example, in the vested drainage and intermittent stream works that work to be done in intermittent streams, previously, we had just indicated that the notification would be done by just first-class mail. In some of the other work, drainage work, it was by certified mail, return receipt mail. So the state's attorney, in order to make this all consistent and a level playing field for everyone and to also obtain proof that mailing had been sent out, has recommended that we change our drainage ordinance to make all of the drainage work that is going to be done, the downstream property owners being notified by certified mail. So I'd be glad to answer any questions and today, oh, I should tell you the date for the hearing. My request is to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice to be held on August 11th at 9:00 a.m. in front of you as the county commission that would make changes to the drainage ordinance. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you Scott. Does anyone have any questions this morning of Scott? Again, this is just the first reading.
And authorize the auditor to publish.
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish.
Second. A motion and a second to publish the meeting for August 11th at 9:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously carries. Item nine, item A is compromise of lien on DP NO number 60818. Mr. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one is in the amount of $2,316. We heard it last week, the applicant wants to resubmit it. I, I'm not ready to really fully discuss it. I'd like to defer action for a week.
Is there a second to?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Barth's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer item A to next week. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item B is DP NO number 83886.
Jeff? Mr. Chair, the amount involved in this is $1,000. And it's a bit of a complicated story here, but the applicant came in and asked us to compromise. Meanwhile, there was a court order asking him to pay these costs and he paid it and then we adjusted it and now he would like to have us reimburse him for the amount that he paid on that. I believe that's, I guess I'd like our state's attorney to perhaps comment on this.
Sure. Kristen, would you make some comments?
Sure, I'll give a little bit of background on this. This lien comes out of public defender fees that were paid stemming from representation. It was, I believe, pre-trial representation as well as a one-day jury trial. At the close of that, the sentence pronounced that these fees that we're talking about, including attorney's fees, be paid as a condition of the sentence. In other words, they're suspended, there's a suspended part of the sentence, but this was a condition to keep that sentence suspended, basically. So time went on, I think you remember that the applicant asked you for a compromise on occasion 2014, I believe. You had asked for some more partial payments to be made at that time, and I believe the applicant did do that. However, that obligation to the court was still hanging out there. I think what happened was, is he asked for the compromise again. Records that we had in your office didn't indicate that obligation was still outstanding. However, I guess it was, the court was still demanding payment of that as part of the condition of sentence. You did compromise the lien that time, recognizing that history of partial payments. And I believe the court notified him that that obligation on their books was unsatisfied in the full amount, yet he paid that off. That went to the county treasury because that's where those amounts go on an obligation like that. And that resulted in a payment that he made of $1,000 more than the amount you agreed to compromise. So what's before you today is, he's asking that that prior compromise that you made be honored and that that $1,000 be returned. However, I have to note that that was a court-ordered obligation that was put in place that I don't think the commission was aware of at the time they made that compromise. So that's a little bit of background. I don't know if the applicant's here and they want to add anything to the discussion. Obviously, they don't have to identify themselves, but.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, if the applicant's here, you do not need to identify yourself. You don't need to come to the microphone. If you have any comments, we'd be happy to hear those comments from the chair, if you will. If you don't have comments, that's fine, but you can certainly stay where you're at and make any comments you'd like to make.
I read over, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I read over the minutes and the notes and I believe Mr. Katmeyer noted that this whole situation has expired. And so it's completely on the commission whether you want to refund that amount. That everything has been paid, everything has been satisfied. If you wanted to stick with your original decision, there would be nothing against that. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's certainly within your power to, basically what it is, is reaffirming your prior decision and compromise. You just need commission action to refund anything from the county treasury.
We're asking for refund back. Everything has been paid in full and now there's a surplus or a thousand dollars that where did it come from type of thing. And that's a part because that was already forgiven and we're asking for a refund.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have any comments?
I have a question for Mr. Katmeyer.
Certainly.
So in the past, we've had other situations where we were not allowed to pay back those kinds of funds. I can't remember exactly what it was, but I think there was a situation where they had accidentally paid it all off or something. And my memory may be faulty here, but is there any restriction on us paying this back?
I see what you're saying. Yeah, we had, we had an item before you where I believe it was an encumbrance on property and the person had paid it off in order to go forward with refinancing or whether it was sale of the home. I don't remember exactly what it was. The difference there is the lien no longer existed once they paid that off. Here, the order is a little different in that the applicant asked for the compromise before the full amount was paid off. So I don't see the same impairment in this case as there were, it was in the prior case.
Mr. Chair, so in order to go forward on this, you don't see any problem with us making decision either way, is it?
It's in your discretion to reaffirm it or uphold what was paid off in full. I think it's within your discretion to do that legally. It's a policy decision on whether you do that or not.
See, if anyone have any questions?
And I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but I do have a question. I'm curious whether there's any precedent for forgiveness of amounts that were required to be paid off as part of a suspended sentence. Does anybody have any knowledge whether we've done that in the past?
I don't have a recollection of that.
I can, I can give you a little background. It's been our experience in the office that sometimes when these obligations are out there as a condition of sentence and they're unfulfilled at the end and there's been efforts to, I don't really want to say collect them, but enforce them by the court, that ultimately the court for good cause showing, if you will, would reduce them to lien at that point. So they would only be a lien at that point. Usually that has the defendant making a showing that they're unable to pay that amount for reasons really out of their control, you know. And a lot of times, we're dealing with indigent defense here, obviously, if you have a lien. So what happens in that instance is they're reduced to lien, so it's just like any other lien that is before you then at that point, which you can compromise, settle, enforce however you see fit.
So the only difference here is that we just got a little ahead of that process?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a reverse in order. I don't know if your actions would have changed at all had the two been flipped, I guess, in order.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So when the applicant came in and we reviewed his situation the second time or whatever and determined that it was all right to compromise this, we were using our judgment at that time. And I think this is just mainly a paperwork type thing and I'll make a motion to restore the $1,000 to the applicant.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to restore the $1,000 to the applicant. Do you want to clarify that a little bit?
Well, I, you know, we, when we, when we studied the situation previously, we decided that the applicant was deserving of this break. The fact that it's been confused by the court order overlapping our lien investigation, I think it's not the fault of the applicant that that happened. And having a second, I do have a question. Do we need to ask, act with a three-person vote or is this a four-person vote situation?
This would only have to be a majority of the total body.
Three.
Okay. A motion and a second.
Roll call.
I believe a roll call vote would be appropriate.
Mr. Bender? Yes. Kelly?
No.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes. The motion has restored the $1,000 back to your account, correct?
Yeah, that can be paid out of the treasure. Yep.
If you want to go to the treasurer's office, they could have you go through that process and sign your life away and stamp it and do all the other things you have to do. I'm kidding. Any other comments before we go to opportunities for public comment? Do we have anyone that's here who would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's not on the agenda. I just want to comment that it was Pam Nelson's 50th wedding anniversary.
Thank you.
She was married at age eight.
We'll go to the regular business agenda. Item number 10 is a briefing on the South Dakota State University Extension Service 4-H program. And you do need to identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Donna Bitiker. I'm the 4-H Field Operations Extension Associate with SDSU Extension. I work with hiring, training, and evaluation of our 4-H field staff. And I'll let Peter introduce, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, good morning Commissioners and all. My name is Peter Nielsen. I'm the 4-H Chief Program Director for SDSU Extension. Wanted to make a few comments. I know you've already received the proposal that was in place and hopefully you had a chance to review that and of course, we'd answer any questions to that. First and foremost, I just wanted to let you know that also our 4-H Youth Advisors, who we think very highly of, Chuck Martinell at full-time and Nathan Sketson at half-time. Both of those individuals are also here present in the room as well. Cooperative Extension Service, if you aren't aware, has been in the United States for over 150-plus years. It's the USDA program. It's a partnership of federal, state, and county funds that goes together for youth outreach and also adult outreach in our state. Over 100 years, the 4-H program has put priorities into what our youth need in the future. And of course, it's a pleasure to be in front of you today, Minnehaha County, being our most populated county and also the most potential for outreach as far as the state's concerned too. In the last couple of years, since Chuck has come on board and of course, with the help for, from Nathan, we've increased over 20% of the membership in the 4-H program in Minnehaha County. 500-plus members have come up, come into the fold. 7,000-plus program participants, which is six hours of contact night time. It's not simply having an event and being counting. But there are 45,000 youth ages 5 to 19 in Minnehaha County. And of course, we want as much impact as we possibly can. So we believe in more success of partnerships from Minnehaha County for their youth outreach and we feel this may be a way to do that. Of course, through the land-grant university, SDSU, we've made quite a few changes in the extension service to be more frugal and to also look at all the opportunities for fiscal responsibility that we have with our partnership, both on a federal level, which rank federal dollars, and of course, county budgets that are also restricted. As we put that together, the sheet that you have in front of you is one we put together. Chuck Martinell, if we look at that from a total expense of $59,010 salary plus benefits and then we've got it broken down by the state and county contribution, which was outlined in the stewards of progress report in 2011, and the commitment we made to our most populated county when it comes to SDSU extension. So of course, the change for this year, it's current and that would not go away. In the next line, you'll notice Nathan Sketson, a half-time employee, total expense of $17,780. That's salary, of course, there's no benefits in that and a contribution. Because that's hourly and not a full-time employee, there's an approximation of maximum that looks like of $8,890 from both the state and county. And then we ask that to be paid in a partnership. So the proposed situation, as we go forward and look at, obviously, there'd be no changes at Chuck's position, but we feel the benefits that he's brought to the program and the opportunity for success and further success in our partnership with our youth in Minnehaha County by bringing Nathan to full-time would put his salary at $34,000, benefits at $13,719. Contribution then would be $29,399 and $18,320 from the county. What's that change mean? That change from the state perspective would be an additional investment of $20,509. And from the county, we are asking them to make Nathan full-time would take a contribution of $9,430. I've gone over with Donna a few times. I hope my math is extremely accurate, and I believe it is after we've checked it unless you could find something that doesn't make sense there. But we'd like you to consider that as an opportunity and I would be glad to answer any questions to the best of my ability or do back to you.
Thank you Peter. Does anyone have any questions about the proposal? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, one of the issues for me as I watch the program, and it is definitely a valuable program and a huge contributor to county life, so many of the clubs that we have are actually within the city of Sioux Falls, which appears to be loaded with money. And then just today in the paper, the state had a $21 million surplus. That's after spending tens or hundreds of millions on football stadiums, et cetera. Why do we have to chip in here?
No, I think it's a very valued question, Commissioner Barth. As we look at that, obviously, those funds to build football stadiums, things like that are not the same fund that we get to use, unfortunately. We are not a line item within the state's budget. However, we are part of the extension service. So with our resources, we find ways to partner with the counties to find the most opportunities that we can. So that's why when we looked at that within our restricted budget as well, that's why we looked at partial. I realize it's not a freebie, but we're looking at that increase on our end to pick up those benefits and also help others on salary to get that. So basically, you could say a two-to-one margin on that. Again, not exactly what you're looking for in terms of total from the state, but within the guidelines that Donna and I have to work on our budgets, that's where we're looking to get the most money for our buck.
Can I address this as well?
Yeah, one of the things, because of the value of it, I know Chuck has put this into the auditor's office as it appears, is originally to be responsible on the budget, he's actually worked to decrease his budget in several areas, which would result in his respect after taking those out and overall increase of $4,600, trying to eliminate as much of that $9,430 commitment from your end as well. And I commend him for looking at that as far as where that could go.
Mr. Chair, I just would say that I do like your chart here. I think it's helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Bender?
Just one follow-up question on that. Commissioner Barth mentioned city funding. Has there been any discussions with the city about whether there's an opportunity for funding there?
From my end, I'm glad we have Chuck's, is okay with that. Typically, extension throughout the United States has been that federal, state, and county partnership. Cities have been involved, it's been more along the grant lines of funding because of the difference of city and county government. So grant funding and things like that has been an opportunity, but it would definitely not be unprecedented to have discussions on that. Chuck?
Chuck, you'll need to come to the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, I am meeting with the city of Sioux Falls today, informational meeting, just to start that discussion. It's a long process also, so I'd also probably would have to look in, meeting with the city of Brandon Hartford also because I work with the, they're wide percentage of population, so I'll be running around, it looks like. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have a question?
I had a comment, so.
Sure.
We've had to cut, you know, we cut all the nonprofits back, didn't take on anything new. There were some real justifications there and we're still, haven't approved the budget, we're still in the middle of it. I really think that probably what we ought to do is take this into consideration when we're doing the budget. I think we've got one more meeting before the final and see how it fits in because it, $10,000 is $10,000. And, you know, we've cut, 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 and all of a sudden, now we're going to be coming back, please, for more. So I prefer to talk on discussion on this, in the budget format.
Okay. Any other comments? I will remind you Chuck, and I'm sure you already know this, but when the county fair is put together, if you will, the Sioux Empire Fair, the city of Sioux Falls is the one who benefits dramatically from that by sales tax revenue and we don't get any sales tax revenue. So you might bring that up in the conversation also and that's a benefit to them. And I wish we had that kind of revenue also to do that kind of opportunity. So my understanding is, is you'd like to defer this until we address it at budget time, correct?
That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to defer until the budget hearing? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes and you're certainly welcome to attend the budget hearings. I don't know if we have a date set on that yet?
21st.
21st?
21st.
Okay. Okay. On the 21st, if you'd like to come back, we would be happy to have you come and do your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Item number 11 is to consider a resolution setting the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning Building Permit Valuations. Scott Anderson?
Once again, Scott Anderson, Planning Department. Last week, I provided a briefing to you on a proposal on tweaking, amending, and increasing our building permit fee schedule. And I have a little chart here I'll show you. I have provided you the proposed resolution and what we are looking at is increasing the rate at which we calculate the square footage by three and a half percent. This is based on generally the Consumer Price Index. And as I provided in my memo, the Consumer Price Index over the last two years has raised about 3.5%. It went up 2.1% in 2013 and 1.4% in 2014. And the last time that we raised our building permit fees was in 2013, which was two years ago, they went up by 1%. And then subsequently, or previously to that, we raised the building permit fees in 2011 by 3%. So this is a gradual implementation of changes. Instead of having one, you know, after five, eight, nine years, we have a huge change. I think it's a much prudent method of increasing fees. I think it's a much prudent method of increasing fees that every period, every, every so often, every couple of years, we look at these and we increase the fees. I have been in discussion with the Home Builders Association, and they are familiar with this. They indicated that they would let me know if they had any concerns, and I did not hear anything from them. And the information has been put out on our website. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, and I can provide any details on the overall calculations of how we generate building permit fees. Just one thing of note, this proposal of increasing by 3.5% would not change or increase really how, the amount that we charge for commercial and industrial building permits. Those are just a flat 1%, and that's not changing. This would only be for residential and agricultural structures. And I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone have any questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth? Scott, did you have any feedback from the home builders and stuff? Did they?
They said they would review it. I talked to them on the phone. They said, I emailed them the information, then subsequently talked to them on the phone, and they indicated that they would review it with their executive board this last week, and if they had any questions, they would contact me. So they have reviewed it. One other thing I did want to indicate, that if you approve the resolution today, the effective date would be September 1st. And this will also give the building community time to increase, if they're bidding projects, to include that in their bid prices. And we also will need to update our computer system with the new rate fees, and it'll take, you know, a week or so to get all that done. So it's September 1st would be the proposed effective date.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Scott, the, what do we do, they hit the permit, my boys have just gone through rehabbing a house, so, you know, and they're in the city, so every week, somebody has to come out and inspect something. And what, do we do that during the course of the process of building of a home?
We typically will do three, three to four building inspections. And it's a little bit different, because the city, they have plumbing inspectors, they have electrical inspectors, and they have then their general inspectors. We, the state of South Dakota does the plumbing inspections and the electrical inspections. And you, if you're a homeowner, you're pulling a building permit, you're given information that indicates that you are required to get a state electrical wiring permit and a state plumbing permit, and I think those are like five or 10 bucks. Then the state electrical, state plumbing inspector comes out and does those permits. We, the county, typically, we will do a footings inspection. We do, then, once that's done, you start framing it up. When you are done with your framing, there's a framing inspection. And then subsequently, somewhere typically in there, when you're building a house, there's a septic inspection. We do that as well. You have to pull a onsite wastewater disposal permit, which is typically a septic permit or septic system, or a mound system, or a holding tank, depending on your specific property. And then finally, you would be required to do a final inspection. And then we look at all of the, you know, details for life and safety, like egress windows, railings, and that type of thing, to make sure it's all complete.
And how many people do we have doing this inspection?
Just one. And he does approximately 2,000 building inspections a year.
And at the end, when he does his final, is, does the state have the plumbing and electrical inspectors located here in Sioux Falls or in?
No, they, they serve a larger region. So I think that one of them is located in Madison, and I think the other one's located out by Canistota or Bridgewater, sort of serves that Mitchell, sort of East River area.
So once they set the, say, set the toilet and all the fixtures, then that guy comes down and, and does the inspection and then signs off on it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? If not, is there a motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? A motion and a second to approve the resolution for the planning and zoning building permit valuations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Scott. Item number 12 is to consider a motion to approve the professional services agreement between the county and IDG for $43,898 for construction administration services. D.J. Boothby?
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. We have a contract that we're just finishing up for the final design of this bridge replacement on 122 with IDG, and we let the contract and awarded the contract to Pram Construction for $460,000 a couple of weeks ago. And so now our next step is to execute a contract for the construction administration, so we can have a daily inspection on the contract during construction. And we've worked several times now with IDG and are comfortable with them performing this work with us. So if you have any questions about the contract, I can answer them now.
Any questions for D.J.?
I make a motion to approve.
Second? We have a motion and two seconds to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 13 is to consider a recommendation to reject the bid for annual materials contract for contract, concrete pipe products.
Commissioners, we received one proposal from a local company here to provide concrete pipe sizes 12 inches to 48 inches only. We were hoping to receive prices for up to 84 inches, and this was the only proposal that we received. We have compared the prices to a couple of other contracts that other counties have in the area that we were aware of prior to our bid opening, but we elected to try to do our own bid opening to get a little bit better prices and not have to pay some delivery charges. But after comparing these prices, the prices that we received for the 12 to 48 inches are going to be actually a little bit higher than what we would receive had we chose to purchase off of one of those other contracts and pay some delivery fees. So we think that it's in the best interest to not award this contract, and then the follow-up agenda item will be to request to purchase off of Union County's bids.
Any questions for D.J.? If not, looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? A second. We have a motion and a second to reject the bid award for annual materials contract for concrete pipe products. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously carries. Item 14 is to consider a motion to purchase concrete pipe products from Hancock Concrete Products and, is it Cretex Concrete Products on their award to Union County. D.J., any comments?
Commissioners, the first contract there with Hancock through Union County is for that 12-inch to 84-inch round pipe, the concrete pipe. And then the second contract is, is with Cretex through Union County, and that is for the reinforced concrete box culvert. And if you have any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, we're just requesting authorization to purchase off of those contracts and have availability to get some pipe.
Questions for D.J.?
I'll make a motion to allow the purchase of concrete pipe products of the Union County contract.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the award of concrete pipe products to, from Union County's bid to Hancock Concrete and Cretex Concrete. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement authorizing the Sioux Empire Fair Association to accept a donation of a new livestock office building. Robert Wilson?
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. This is an item that was deferred from last week, and what we have before you is an agreement that will be signed by the county, the Sioux Empire Fair Association, and Campbell Supply that memorializes the donation that will be made. And this is a donation that some donors approached the Fair Association, willing to donate a building that'll be a livestock office to the, to the Fair, well, to Minnehaha County as the, as the owner of the grounds, but would be used as a livestock office during the, during the fair. Number of donors involved, would be naming rights involved, that Campbell Supply would make the major donation here of $6,000 and have the naming rights. Building would be a 16-by-28 building located to the west of the livestock buildings. Again, this will, this will be the property of Minnehaha County. Only restrictions on it, other than that particular use during the fairgrounds, during the fair, and the naming rights for Campbell Supply. This agreement has been reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office and the Fair Association and Campbell Supply. I would stand by for any questions.
Any questions, Robert?
Robert, the entire deal is going to be donated, is that correct?
Correct.
Campbell's by donating $6,000 is going to get naming rights?
Yes.
And then they've got a series of smaller donors, is that?
Yes. And this, this is a donation and a process that was fully initiated and coordinated by the Fair Association. So at, as, at the point that it was brought forward to the, to the county, that was the only request made of, as part of receiving this building, was the, the naming rights for one, for one of the donors to have naming, naming rights on the building.
So there will be no cost to the county and presumably no cost to the Fair Association?
Correct.
Bringing in electrical or water or anything else?
The full cost of, of construction materials, labor, the full cost of erecting this building will be, will be covered.
There won't be any requests later for, oh, we forgot this, or something? No, thank you. Just want to make sure.
Any other comments? If not, a look for a motion?
I'd make a motion to allow the chair to sign that agreement, accepting a donation of a new building.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Fair Association and the new livestock office building donation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously carries. Item number 16 is a briefing about the fairground facility exterior repairs. Mr. Wilson?
And again, this is a deferment from two weeks ago, when we had a bid opening scheduled and received no bids for building repairs to fairground buildings as a result of hail damage about a year ago at this point. There were, again, there were no bids formally received in the, in the proper manner. There was one proposal that was delivered to our architect, who prepared the RFP, but nothing that was delivered as it would conform to the requirements as laid out in the, in the notice and the bid specs. In consultation with State's Attorney's Office and on the recommendation of Mr. Ken McFarland, who really was fairly instrumental in getting this RFP drafted and the process set forward on the early end, the recommendation was that now that, that you have gotten to the point where that, no bids were received, that to look for authorization to go out and solicit quotes or estimates from a number of, from potentially interested firms to, to prepare the work, to do the work. And I have spoken directly with, with the one firm that, that delivered a, a proposal or bid to the architect, and they appear very willing and eager to res, to submit a, a proposal to complete the work. In talking to a number of other folks, including Scott Wick of the Fair, Fair Association, he believes he knows a contractor that may be interested in the, in the job. And then Auditor Bob Litz has indicated that he may know a couple of contractors that are also interested in submitting proposals to do this work. So what, what we would, would ask for at this point is authorization to make that, that request and that, solicit estimates and proposals from contractors to perform the work as it is spelled out in the, in the bid documents. I understand, again, speaking with State's Attorney's Office, as long as we are following the RFP and the scope of work is the same, that this is an appropriate and acceptable way to, way to proceed.
Any questions, Robert?
So we have no more, we're not changing anything, so we have no expense for architects drawing up the RFP or anything like that on this time around?
No. We are, we are asking for proposals from different, different contractors.
Just mulligan, to redo?
Yeah, to do, to do the work exactly as we have specified in the RFP.
Any other questions? Since you asked for authorization to proceed, we probably need a motion to set that up.
Yeah, you need to, you need a motion to put it out for bid, or for a proposal on can, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion? And do you have a recommended date on when you're going to ask for these to be back?
Believe I indicated in the, I'm not, yes. All contractors will be asked to submit an estimate to the, to the Commission Office by July 31st. So we're looking for a, probably a somewhat potentially aggressive timeline, but this is a project that's been in the works for, for a while. So yes, we're looking by July 31st.
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, so I'm asking, yes, the State's Attorney and the Auditor's Office. This is basically just the same as a normal request. So I'm hearing an affirmative on that. I'll make a motion to put this out for a bid.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to look for bids for the fairground facility exterior repairs. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item 17 is to discuss the sponsoring, supporting of the Minnehaha County employee to the Leadership Sioux Falls program. Mr. Wilson?
And again, the, the county has been a long supporter of the Leadership Sioux Falls program. There's a number of county employees who have gone through, have completed the program. Sheriff Mike Milstead is on the advisory board of this program and deeply involved in it. And just traditionally, what the county has done is support and provide for the application and tuition expenses for one county employee to participate in the program.
Is there a motion? I believe this is.
I'll make a motion to authorize to do it again.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
And we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval?
Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number 18 is to discuss a establish and establish legislative priorities in prep for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Annual Convention. Robert?
And, and this is truly just a discussion item I'm bringing to you at this point. I mentioned it briefly at the end of the Commission meeting last week, that as part of the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Legislative Agenda and Platform, they, the association takes input and resolutions from counties, that individual counties would like to see as part of the full association's legislative platform, and then considers those and the ones that are approved by the full, the full body, become part of the association's legislative platform going into the following year's legislative session. And the timeframe and the process of how that works out is that counties are, have to submit legislative resolutions passed in, in resolution form by the, by the Board of Commissioners by the end of July, and then all resolutions that are passed by camp. And then all resolutions that are passed by counties are forwarded to the Resolutions Committee of the SDACC for consideration and review. And then a number of resolutions coming from the counties will be forwarded from the Resolutions Committee onto the full association body for consideration at the convention in September. And the ones that, the resolutions that are approved by the full body in September become the legislative platform for the association going into the session in January. So what I am asking you for today is just the beginning of a discussion of what you would like to see, whether it's research on staff, staff research to look into resolutions or just to begin thinking about potential resolutions that you would like to bring forward to, forward to the Resolutions Committee. And again, as I'm bringing it to you today on the 14th, this is a discussion only today. We will come back again in two weeks on the 28th for your consideration of action on the specific resolutions. So this is, that would, that you would act on to forward to the association. So this is truly just a discussion today. I've heard from at least one of you on ideas or potential resolutions that you would like to bring back in two weeks. But again, this is just your discussion at this point to either make requests of staff to prepare information or to have that discussion amongst yourself of how you would like to prepare for that agenda item in two weeks.
Thank you, Robert. Is there any discussion currently that you would like research done on? Commissioner Kelly?
I think I'm still on the Resolutions Committee, at least I haven't heard anything different. So, but this year, because of the summer study going on, I think it kind of affects a little bit of what we're going to do. If anything is going to come out of legislators, it's probably going to come out of that summer study. And, you know, at the point when they give their report and then we see if they're going to induce any legislation, which they may or may not do, I think then, you know, some of those things, we're going to have to jump on board real hard with them. There are a couple of issues that perhaps we could talk about. And, you know, in view of the fact that the cities and the state both seem to be rather flush in their receipts, they get 25 to the cities and 75 to the state for the alcohol tax, we get zero. And I, this is not my idea, Cindy came up with this two years ago, I think, but we really would have an argument for getting a good share of that money. What we end up doing as opposed to what the state and what the cities have to do, basically they say you're under arrest, they do the, and then we do everything from there on out. So I think that's one area we can look at is the allocation of that distribution. And I don't know what that number is, I got it somewhere in my files, but couldn't find it. Maybe Robert's probably still got it in his. The other one would be the surcharges on communications that increase is sunsetting in, I believe 18, is that right, Robert? Does that sound right? I think...
I need to check, I believe you're correct.
I think it's 18. I think we got to work towards removing that sunset provision. And it's got to be done early because otherwise the planning, I mean, if we get into next year, the planning for the, for these agency, for the communication, metro communications, it's going to be most difficult because they have no idea what their receipts are going to be.
Other comments? Commissioner Barris?
Well, I got to say that I was a little disappointed last year because we go through the motions of coming up with our priorities and then we go to the legislature and they tell us what the priority is and then we go along with it. You know, the highway bill was the priority and we're happy to have it, but it certainly didn't make our list, I don't think, at our state convention. I agree with Dick, though, that those are some fine ideas. I wouldn't try to reach so high as to get a penny away from the municipalities, they would fight us tooth and nail to prevent us from getting any of their share of the booze money. I think we should go back to the property tax limitation where we had a bill two years ago to make it instead of 3% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less to whichever is greater. And that incremental increase on an annual basis would make it less likely to have a large increase every now and then like we are doing this year. I also think that maybe we ought to look at having the county reimbursed by the state for persons convicted and sentenced to jail. If they're being sentenced to jail by the judges at our expense, I think we ought to be reimbursed for it. And in the same way, I think that people convicted but waiting sentencing in our jail, I've heard stories of people waiting some significant time for a background check or pre-sentence investigation. If they've been convicted and are still in our jail, the state ought to be paying us for their board and room. And I think those small changes could make a great difference. I've heard others talk about having the municipality where a person is arrested to have some share of the cost of prosecution. That's, would be interesting.
Any other comments? One of my concerns about waiting too long with this summer study issue is they have not met yet and the summer is over half over. And my understanding is they're not planning on meeting until September or October. So I don't know.
Not in August, but let me look.
No, they moved it back. Is it August?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm surprised that, you know, they haven't met before now. But I have talked to the representative of Conza out of Rapid City, who's the chair. So they, I know she's working on it quite hard now. As a group, they really haven't met. Let me see.
Mike, do you know when it is? Okay. Carol, do you have any information about that?
Yeah, I've got it on my calendar. I think it's the 25th or 26th of August.
Have you got anything for the 29th, Carol? Of July?
It's the last two weeks. Okay, it is the 19th and 20th of August.
19th.
And September ties in with your state conference.
That's, yeah, that's with the state.
And then October 28th.
Okay, thank you. Any other suggestions? At this point, we would just ask staff for some background information and impact, if you will, on some of the things that have been suggested. So if you would, in the next week or not much longer than that, if you would get that information request to Robert so that he can come back to the commission by the end of the month so we can get this completed. I think we need to do that. So far, we've got a few, obviously, revenue enhancements from sales tax and alcohol tax and the support of the 9/11 fee sunset being removed. Other than that, I don't think there is anything. I think you have to have a short list, frankly. The other thing is, in the past, didn't we ask department heads for their suggestions? In some cases, they go directly to their association, but we've also got some feedback from department heads, correct?
Correct. And we have a department head meeting scheduled next week, and prior to that, we can put out a notice to consider ideas and bring them to us at that time.
Okay. Well, I think we need to know those department heads, what their associations are planning to do, too, that mingles with ours. You've got more experience lobbying than anybody in the room here.
Me?
Yeah, I mean, you up there for, you spend more time than anybody else as a computer because of your organization, but do you have any ideas?
We don't do any lobbying, no.
Okay, the wrong word.
We do information.
Information. Do you have any suggestions? On timing or on...
To me, and this is just a personal observation, but if we're going to wait till legislative session begins, you're behind the eight ball because they're so involved in other activities, some of the conversations and discussion have to be before that starts. But that's just a personal observation. Pam, if you'd like to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Happy anniversary, by the way.
Maybe, now I'm old, so Jeff should have shut up.
Never.
I'll go with the married at eight, though. Well, I think that you should have an idea of what you want to do, and then we should be good about trying to sell it to somebody else. But I think we have to know for ourselves what we want. And I think if you have a short list and get something significant, that your odds are better off. So I'm interested in personally helping you guys with the distribution issue. I'm not sure what the distribution ought to be, but we always talk about it, and I think it's a significant part of our problem. But I think we have to, for ourselves, agree on how we think that distribution ought to be. And I think maybe if you could go in the direction of taking some of the money that you, they already have and distribute it differently, that's an easier sell than giving them more money to have. And I don't think they, the reason you have caps in the first place is because county, some counties have surpluses. Another issue that would be significant when legislators look at some of that stuff would really be the fact that how you go about raising that money is equally important. But I think for us to lead, and you have to realize that not everybody has the same distribution issue as that we do. So I think some of the larger counties' distribution is a huge issue. For us, probably Sioux Falls in this state is the biggest problem. Pennington County would be in there, probably Brown County. But a lot of the little counties don't have the same problems that you do because they don't have the same numbers of people. But I think as a group, we should all decide on what we want to do and then try to sell it at our convention. And maybe that involves, you know, maybe you could put a little group together involving city people, county people. But even I think we ought to have our county solution and then work with the city and groups that might be interested in helping us. And there are some. But it's all about, you know, you make your friends and then before you ask for stuff. So I think that communication with the legislative legislators on a regular basis, not just at an event or once a year or whatever, I think would make us a lot more effective. So if we could be pretty specific about the distribution and what we think our solution is, and somebody tossed around 30% of whatever, and I'm thinking whatever they said we're getting that the city gets 60% of or 40% of, those numbers should probably be different because the city doesn't pay for any of that stuff. We do. And I think that you can sell, I think people can understand it easily, and I think they'll see it makes sense, too. Now, Dick's been a legislator, I've been a legislator, so I think that's helpful. At least he knows and understands how they work and operate. So I think that that could be very positive for us if we can, but I think we have to decide for ourselves what solution we think we want, and then we need to try to sell it. So I don't know if that was helpful to you or not, but I can't keep quiet anyway.
Well, the most part, the most beneficial part was the fact that you asked Jeff to be quiet, so.
Oh. Sorry, Jeff.
No, no, no.
And I appreciate the thought.
I think you're right, but before we complete this, at the end of July, we have to have everybody's ideas on the table and then we'll prioritize them. And I do agree with you that it needs to be a small, select process rather than a broad base kind of thing. And everybody needs to be involved because it affects everybody.
Well, and, you know, like I said, part of the problem is you've got 66 counties and not all 66 of them have that problem. And then if they do, it's not to the same significant extent that we have it.
Correct.
So, anyway, thank you.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Robert?
I would just point out that, I would just point out that last year, when you went through this process, you did start, I was just looking back at the minutes a little earlier from last meeting when you approved your resolutions, that you started with eight of them and you did whittle that down to six. So you did, you did start that process on the county level of taking a broad look at a number of different proposals that were brought forward to you and limited that number, that list, a little bit in terms of the resolutions that were ultimately passed and forward on to the committee for consideration.
Well, another thing, last year, of those eight, I think we've got, or six, there were six that we finalized on. Four of them, I think, got passed the state, did we not? Does that sound right?
Yeah.
But I don't know how much, how much support we got really out of the state. It's hard to measure, but when you think, every county has one vote at the state association. And you got, you know, between Lincoln and Minnehaha County, you've got 25% of the population. So it's hard to, for these small counties up in the northwest area, down in the southwest area, it's really, yeah, it's hard for them to relate to the issues we have just as it's hard for us to relate to a county that only has 45 property taxpayers. And that's kind of the, that's, you know, first we got to go through here and then going there and then, and sometimes it's easy to get it through resolutions and then it's very hard to get any traction on it after that. That was one thing I said. So I think we've got to be realistic in our, in our goals, too, as to what benefits all counties and then what specifically benefits the, probably the six or seven largest.
It's kind of like the counties in the same position like, the county's kind of in the same position like the Sioux Falls School District is. They all had a lobbyist in the school district, but we found that, I think it was 10 of the larger school districts had their own lobbyists. They had their own agenda because their needs and stuff were a lot different. And I think that's the same situation in the counties. I don't think, maybe there aren't even 10 of us, but for the school district, at least when the 70s, in the late 70s, when I was on the board, that was a huge difference because we found that our interests were a lot different than some of the other small school districts. And so we indeed had our own lobbyists, and they worked solely for our agenda. And so I think we could figure out who we think we have the most in common with. For them, it was 10, maybe we have five or maybe we have six, maybe we only have three. But then we hire them to do our agenda. Because our interests aren't, sometimes they do conflict with some of those school districts. I mean, just the existence of some of those school districts probably conflicts with having the larger districts. So I think that approach would work, and I think it's nothing that we've ever done before. And I think we pick it really good, effective, well-known, credible lobbyists, not just anybody out there to do that. I think we have another advantage this year that, I mean, at least we didn't lose anything as I see it when Ken left us, which his contribution was huge because he had those connections. And it's a lot about connection. We do have the advantage now of having Carol taking that job. She also adds something to that job that maybe Ken didn't exactly have the same perspective from. Not that he didn't do an excellent job, because he did, but she has insight because some of the programs that she had the most to do with are some of the biggest reasons that we spend a lot of money. So she might be able to provide a lot of insight in that area, too, if we look at the distribution part of the problem. But maybe we need to consider, exactly, I think distribution is the biggest issue. It should be the number one priority, and then you need to agree what it is, and then you need to find an effective lobbyist. And it may not be the same as the 66 other counties out there, 65 other counties. So if I can help in any way in that regard, maybe start with a smaller group right away that narrows down how you can get that done, and you don't have a lot of time.
Yep.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Long gone before I get in trouble. Get in more trouble.
You're not in trouble. Any other comments? If you have ideas or suggestions, I'd suggest you get those to Robert or Carol in the next few days, and then we can look at the details starting next week and finalize it by the end of the month. Is that okay? And today, when you're at staff, if people do have suggestions, I certainly want to hear from them, I would think. Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll go to any liaison report assignments. Anyone have any liaison committee reports? If not, new business? Old business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
There is a meeting of the South Dakota DOT tonight at the Ram Cota, 7 o'clock. Might be interesting to go to.
I think we all got info. I think we all got information or an email on that, if I remember, but thank you, Jeff. With that, I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
That's my motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thanks.